Meeting of the Carable Board and Mayor of Alderman to order at this time. Can you call up, please?
Mr. Glenn Smith?
Here.
Ms. Heatherly?
Here.
Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Ms. Crawford?
Here.
Alan Smith?
Here.
Mark Stanley?
Here.
Mayor Stanley?
Here.
Dear Heavenly Fathers, thank you for letting us have another day that you have made for us. Thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on us. Dear God, just be with this council as we lead this community. And that we will not forget, God, that you put us here for a reason. That we will always put you first. And I pray for all of those in our community who are sick, that you will heal their sick bodies, if it be your will, or that you would relieve them of their pain. Go with each family in our community, God, that you would just bless them and help them in their needs. And Jesus has our prayer.
Amen. All right, give you a few minutes to look over the previous meeting. Minutes. All right, can we get a motion to approve the minutes as they read?
Motion to approve with exception of bringing approval of minutes versus month of December. Change to March. Something to see if it can be corrected. I'm very first.
Okay, so motion to accept the minutes as they read and to change the month of December to March. In our regular meeting of that. No. Down like Earth. So motion's on for. Second. Second the motion. Call roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Stanley?
Yes. That brings us to our financial report.
Bank balance is as of April 30th, 2013. And general fund, we have $327,489 street aid fund. State street fund, $55,563. Industrial fund, $1,099,550. The drug fund, $10,459. Total bank balance of $395,506. Revenue was $106,077. Expenses was $99,605. Difference of $6,472.
Okay, you heard financial report as it reads. Can I get a motion to accept it as it reads?
Make motion to accept it as it reads.
Motion has been made. Can we get a second on that? Second the motion. Any discussion on that? Call roll, please.
Mr. Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Library report.
In the month of April, we had a quartet from the Knoxville Symphony Orchestra come for storytime at the library. The theme was "How Many Cats." And a lady from the orchestra read three different stories. And then they accompanied that with music. And the children learned about how counting is important. Learned counting is important in music. And we had a really good attendance. We had 54 people. So I was really pleased with that. I've been planning our summer reading program for the month of June. And that's almost wrapped up now. We had nine preschool storytimes with attendance of 205 people. Our library attendance was 1,055. We had 372 computer users. We did 44 interlibrary loans. Our circulation has been increasing since January. We checked out 1,699 items. And with everything that came back in, we had 3,002 items go back across our desks. We added 80 new items to our collection, which is using state and county funds.
Thank you, Rob. Seems like you're getting a little busy?
Yes.
Assistant's input.
Yes, I'm Ed Garvey. I've come to address this committee tonight. And the main thing I wanted to just say to you guys right up front, I have no respect whatsoever for you. So know that right from the beginning. And I think I know all of you guys. Just from the way that you've done this committee the last four weeks and taken guys' raises away to demotion to the chief of police, now to the foreigner Cheryl. And it said in the paper that the reason for demoting the chief was lack of management skills. And I want to say there is a lack of management skills over here, but it's not in the police department. It's sitting right here in front of me. And I want to say that. And for two of you, I want you to know I have no competency. That's gone. And Ms. Vicki, I want to say to you, I've talked to a lot of people over the last several weeks. And there's not a one that's got a bad thing to say about you. I want you to know, I'm sorry, I don't know you personally, but it seemed like everybody else in the community did, and they talked about you. They talked about the way you try to stand up and do what you're right over here. And I'm going to say this, and they tell me, men and women both alike, and they say this with the greatest respect. And I want you to take it as that. But they say you're the only man over here in this committee. And also, I want to say, they say they hope you won't get discouraged and quit. But, you know, if you wanted to get out of this den of snakes, nobody could blame you for that either. So, but me personally, I wouldn't give them the satisfaction myself. Thank you.
All right. Reports from council members.
Running committee submit, first and most, Matrix and Pro Image. They give Pro Image their final plat or approval. Give Matrix a primary. They'll come back next month and get it to plat. They may be going. Pro Image should be getting ready to spin things together, start the building out there. They got to get some primaries type prep work. And outside of that, they should be ready. Scott can tell you more about it out there. He was in there with them.
But they are getting close. All the funding is in place, except for the fast track grant, but it's on.
So it's all within.
I would say within a couple of weeks, you're going to see equipment and everything start moving into construction.
And actually, they think when they're going to start looking at the t-top out here, look at the road out there, to take it all the way around. I'll afford to come back around a complete circle. Some trucks can travel around too, though. It might be better for them getting out of there. Once that place gets expanded, the trucks traffic's going to be bad through there. Not road company will get them hold it out. And we got one thing from Frank, from the utilities. On the monthly rental that they sent us is $615.93. That's on the point down here. And force of the vector and the gas fees, you just might, I'll be killed.
All right. All right, Lloyd? I'm sorry, Vicki?
I just want to say, I'm just excited about Matrix and their expansion that's going on.
Yeah.
And that's helping out our city and we'll see profit coming more so. More money to get in there. We're all open up on that.
Lloyd? Okay, the garbage, we had 57 tons. Recycled six tons. Brush was 19 tons. April cleanup was 28 tons. Petch the hose throughout the city. Mowed throughout the city. Picked up brush throughout the city. Got 25 tons of software next year. And put the new sign frame on Main Street. And I got a comparison here from 2011 to 2012 of what we picked up in the garbage. We had 575 tons of garbage in 2012. 2011, we had 563 tons. And recycled in 2012 was 63 tons. And recycled in 2011 was 72 tons. The brush was 125 ton in 2012. 2011, it was 71 tons. The April cleanup in 2012 was 34 tons. April cleanup in 2011 was 12 tons. We have some coverage that we need to put in when we start to pave roads. David needs to hit me out on one day here, the one on Christopher Lane. The one on Christopher Lane, David, it's, you got a PO number here of 7144. It's your order one.
Yeah, that's already been.
Oh, it's been done, okay.
Yeah.
So we need to purchase one before the loop road in Shell, Ohio?
Yeah.
And one at, one at Loop Road and Bridge Gap Road in Butter Bay. Is that, got to have one for that one too?
There just been two. The big one at Arctic Harbor Chords and the one at Shell Hall at Arctic Bottom.
Oh, that's on too, we need?
Yeah.
So we probably need to get those and those ordered off of where we need to get there and get those put in before they start paying the road.
Yeah.
These parts here are $811.80. Is that for all those covers? We need those two covers, that for both of them. $811.
Yeah.
And $10.53 for the band. I think it was $27.06. What was that for, David? On that paper you got?
One size band would be 13 and one size band would be 26.
Okay, I'm sorry. So that's what we need to finish that road up, the big red paper.
Right.
As far as the recreation report, I did talk to Jerry Faust, who is over the Campbell County Youth Baseball. I know they had a tournament to raise money this past weekend. All that money that's raised from the gate is supposed to go to help fund the All-Star games when they travel to wherever they're going. Whether it's Kingston or wherever they have their tournaments. So, other than that, there shouldn't be any time that there's any money that's taken in at the gate unless the city hosts an All-Star game, which this year, they're not up to host an All-Star game. So there shouldn't be an issue there. As far as revenue that comes into the city off of the concession stand, we have the Lions Club that is doing the concession stand for the Carable Youth Baseball down there. And all the money that they raise off of the refreshments goes to the Lions Club. And, you know, he said that he'd be more than welcome to come and address the council if we desired that, to talk about the Lions Club, what they use the money for. He said that he's had a good response over there from just the people that is going to the games, that it's for the Lions Club. And a lot of times when they find out that it's for Lions Club, they'll, you know, even give them extra money, you know, for that cause. So that's been a positive as far as that goes, that the money's raised, that it's kept within the county. Other report that I need to give is, in regards to a survey that they came over, this is the TML pool, and they looked at some of the things over at the ballpark. One of their main concerns was the wooden structure that we have at the ballpark. At the time of the report, there was a slide that was on there, and it had different cracks and things of that nature in the slide. Since then, the slide's been taken down. They also recommended taking the monkey bars and the structure down because it's just old, splintery wood. And also, it doesn't have adequate, doesn't have adequate padding or substance underneath it. If the pit fell out of it, there's nothing there but the ground. So the recommendation from the lady that done the survey would be to remove that structure, since we do have the updated newer playground equipment there. And so I've been working with David, and we're hoping to get that done here within the next couple of weeks or so, to take care of that. We definitely don't want any child to get hurt over there. But other than that, there was a few things that she recommended also. I responded about some bleachers, some seating that was there, and how that we was going to try and look at maybe in the future, getting some aluminum seating, solid wood structure because of the splintering and stuff like that, to keep from having to replace those bleachers from time to time. So that was my response to her, and I'll have it here in case anybody wants to read it or take a look at it. But also, that we needed to kind of come up with a monthly inspection, that if there is anything over there that's damaged or anything that could possibly hurt someone, that we need to get it fixed. So those are the things that I addressed to her in my report that I sent back to her. So other than that, that's all I have for recreation.
All right. Thanks for that. Alan?
From April 8th to May 7th, auto accident with injury had three, 13 men, three and a half hours. Auto accident without injury was one, four men, one hours. Had a chemical leak, two men, half hour. House, let's see, house fire without injury, we had four, 24 men, three hours. Mutual aid given three times, 13 men, six hours. Our training was post-disaster assessment, two men, eight hours. Our false alarm had one, six men, half hour. And set up landing zone for life star three times, 13 men, two and a half hours. Total calls was 16, total men was 77, and total man hours was 252.
You want to talk about that?
On the. What this is, Campbell County Rural Fire Service met with me and, and Pinecrest is no longer a fire department. And some Campbell County Rural Fire Service is wanting us to take a section here and provide fire service to some people out next to our industrial park on McGee Lane. And we, years ago, we did provide fire service with these people, for these people in this community. And then Pinecrest took it over, and now the county is wanting us to take it back. I've talked with Frank Wallace, and they, outside the city, we charge $1.75 per meter. We've got 346 meters in this area, which will bring in $605.50 a month. Jaxbury has took on a lot bigger section than we have. And with us giving these people fire protection, it's going to lower their homeowner's insurance quite a bit. And I told them, I told Don that I would bring that before the mayor and council. Do we need to, do we need to vote on this?
I don't think so. I don't think so. If you want to, we can add it to the agenda.
I don't see, Jaxbury, I talked with them, they didn't.
They didn't vote on it. We talked to the majority of the fire department that was here tonight, and they're all in agreements that they want to help those people to have insurance. Their, I'm sure their insurance has went up quite a bit since the loss of Pinecrest. So our fire department stepped up quite a bit. The chief's not here tonight, but my understanding, he's on board with that also.
Yes.
Assistant chief, so I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody.
Okay.
I appreciate you doing that work on it too.
No problem.
And appreciate the fire department doing that. Lisa, do you have anything to go on recreation? Okay. All right. All right, communication from the mayor. We did have opportunity to go up with Matrix and talk to them about the expansion that they are going to be doing. It looks like, for now, it's going to be somewhere around 25 jobs. When it's totally done, it's going to be about 90, was my understanding. We met with a couple of people from the state, and it went well. And we're very pleased that they're expanding. There is another possibility, right now, a business going into the 141. It's just in the first stages. And if this, we hope that it's going to go in, it's about a $10 million investment. So it's much revenue that could be used for the town carable. And if that goes on, with, goes on along with the other jobs that are being created at Matrix and the sign company, then things are looking really up. That's going to be a boost for us. That's all the, all the communication I have on that. Old business?
I just want to ask about the rainy day fund and the old business. You know, we talked about getting someone to come in and talked to us about what would be the best avenue to go and, you know, putting that money back in the way of that fund.
Yeah, I think we're going to, I believe we're going to talk about that budget. That we're going to put in the budget now, that we're going to, you know, try to look at the rainy day fund, put it back in there. And there's a lot of things in the budget that we're going to have to go over. So we know that is something that is needed, and we had to cash the rainy day fund in. For those that didn't know, the city carable was out of money completely. If we hadn't cashed rainy day fund in, I guess we'd have been completely in the red.
That's why we need to keep some back there.
So, right. And so, we're going to be looking at doing that along with other things in the budget, that we'll do that, we'll be up to the budget. Any other old business? Is that, sounds fair? Any other old business? New business, approval to pay the invoice for $689 to Copeland Brothers for the work that they've done.
That was a lot over here at the, that's a lot of everything.
These are lights in the, in the industrial park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of them. Looks like a stay home. Yeah, they had, put some light fixtures in. I can't remember the estimate that they gave us on that.
I think it was 1100 and $6.
Yeah.
About half. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
And all the lots of work under the government, do you have?
Yes. Yeah, Lloyd made the motion and Vicki seconded. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Now, this is the loads, approval to pay the invoice of loads, $596.68. Alan, you was involved in that, weren't you?
Yeah, me and Glenn both was. What this is, is all the outside lights here at the city hall, a lot of them don't work. Some of them works. A lot of them don't work, some of them works partial. But we're gonna replace the bulbs in all of them. And David is needing a couple of lights over there under the shed, it's real dark over there. And then he, the hundred-foot wall, that's, and the conduit, that's for David, putting those lights under the shed. And the rest of those, the bulbs and the, is for here at city hall.
You'll put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
Motion is on the floor, can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this? Call roll, please.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Motion made and passes. Discussion with the audit contract with Browns, Jacob, and McDangle. We do have to have that, I believe that said by June the 30th, is that what I had?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we need to, that needs to be done to correspond with the state requirements that we have to audit their company and do the act. Then they will make the motion that we go ahead and contract with them. Yeah, I think we've had on three or four years? How many years?
I like that motion that we have contracts with Brown, Jacob, and McDangle to do our audits for the next year.
Alright, motion has been made, can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Second motion. Any discussion on this? Call roll, please.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Alright. We have a certification renewal for the 141 wine and spirit. That is the Hoskins, Mark, and Jeff Hoskins establishment up at the 141. Our vapor highway, 291. That has to be renewed for their license for the state. They wanna put that in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second the motion. Any discussion on this?
They aren't in compliance with everything that's been checked out.
Well, I would think that they would be in compliance with... No investigations done.
I think they pretty much handle all that.
They come in and do random audits on what they sell and what they have. And kind of balance it out and see if it's right. But, I'm sure they welcome anybody to come up there and look around or anything. Doug, second motion. Doug, you second on that?
Lord.
Alright, any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Stanley.
Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Upstanding. Motion may be carried. Approval for road drive for Stony Ford Volunteer Fire Department for June 8th, 2013. Have you guys done any work with them before, Stony Ford?
Uh, we've done some, I think we've helped.
Pretty good guys, haven't seen them. Alright, they're wanting to hold a drive that I'm assuming down by Shillings?
Yes.
Down by Shillings? Can I get a motion to let them have their road drive for their fire department, volunteer fire department?
Has nobody else asked for that, Doug?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'll make a motion, that's what we give on that note.
I'll second.
Second the motion. Any discussion on this? Okay, call roll.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Discuss the bids for the road paving of Elkins Road and Loop Road. And we had some bids come in. David, is this the only bid that we got in?
Yes.
From Rogers Group? Well, we know by tonight's discussion that you have to put a couple of culverts in over there. This more work before Loop Road is paved, is that correct? It looks like the price came in a little bit lower than what they estimated at first.
I've seen it, that's why.
Yeah. It's gonna cost, this bid here is, for Loop Road is for sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. And then, on the school road from Elkins Road from the bridge to the second school entrance is gonna be forty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eleven. Still working on that, okay?
Along this Loop Road, on this, here, I talked to Dennis Potter. We have also got that road that goes up, I call it over 25. It's...
Jaxborough? You want that towards Jaxborough?
Yeah.
It's not on this one.
It's not on this one, I've got a...
It was only, in your last meeting, you only asked a bid out. Yeah. Okay. Well, I seen a estimate or a guesstimate on... Forty-five? Over 25, there's a quote for forty-eight-six. Forty-eight-six.
And that's also by Rogers Group, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be part of it cheaper than that, since they've come down a lot. What I was willing to say is Dennis Potter's willing to pay his part of that road, part of that road to county. From, from Rod Duff Gardner Lane at that first house on the left. County takes over there and then they claim all the way up to Rod Duff Pym, where the little apartments are. Dennis said, when he got ready to pay that, we could wait till then. And we might get a little better deal on the things there.
Right.
That would be good if we could do that. Maybe if I can get some money here, over here, we go ahead and do Elkins Road too. And that way, we can all do it at the same time, we might save a little money.
Okay, so we'll...
His budget will come out to July.
Right.
He said he'd make his budget come out later, maybe his part.
Okay, there's also from the second school entrance to Evans Road. Do we want that? Do you guys think about that? Like, it should just be to the school or all the way up to that road?
The only thing I might be, to get some help from, from Elkins Road at the bridge to the second entrance to the school. I might get help there, but I don't think that'll...
Yeah, right.
So, the other part, we may have to go ahead and plant some shelves there. So, that's, I've got a little bit more work to do on that. That inch and a half gonna be enough thickness of road, 'cause we generally put down two inches.
It'll end up being inch and a half, but if you two inches, by the time it's rolled in, it'll be inch and a half.
Three inches by the time it's rolled in?
It's two-inch cap, by the time it's rolled in, it'll be inch and a half. That's what he's saying.
Is that the way it always, we always do that? What is that sleeve mix?
That's a mix that Dennis has come up with. And they're using, instead of half-inch rock, it's a quarter-inch, they call it eighty-nines. And it's a little bit cheaper on the mix.
How's it last compared to the...
It's doing well, ridge roads out of it, there's several roads that he's paid out. It's, I recommend it, it's doing well. Yeah, and we wanna say, thanks for those potholes that got filled up. He put the mix in right, so appreciate. And Dennis Potter has fixed, semi-fixed that road up through there. And I thank them, nobody really knew where the road ended. But the majority of those big potholes was past our city limits. Yeah, they were huge, they were big. But he did do that for us and we appreciate Dennis for helping us out. So, as it stands now, you just wanna go ahead and earmark to sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for Loop Road and wait on the other and see if we can get a little bit of help with that. And then, after we get done with that, we may wanna put back out for bid the 25 on that. So, you wanna make that a motion, go ahead and on the Loop Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion on the Loop Road, on paving on the Loop Road. And then, wait on the, on the Elkins Road from the, from the bridge to the second entrance to the school. And at that, also at that time, we'll take bids for the 25. I'll make it into a motion.
Okay, motion has been made. Did you get on that page? Can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on this?
Yes, I have a discussion on it. In my mind, I'd like to see a large paving project going. I know this is one of our worst roads that we have. Are we gonna pay this out of our general budget?
Yes.
'Cause that money wasn't budgeted in our last budget, so... And we're still gonna have money to put back that rainy day fund if we pay all this. Because that was one of our stipulations that we wanted to do that. I would like to entertain doing the State Street Aid Fund. That's what it's marked for, is for roads. And I think when we did the paving years ago, that's what we did. We earmarked that money on State Street Aid specifically for paving. And I think that paving is to be paid off coming up very, very soon. I don't think we have any payments left out.
It was paid out.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, I mean, it was closer, was. So, I mean, I'd hate to go and spend our money now. Interest rates are right bottom right now as far as getting your money upfront. And I just, I'd rather instead of spending the money out of the general fund, I'm all for the paving. I'm all for paving all the roads that we can. But just going about getting the money another way instead of depleting our funds out of our... I mean, I know it's not gonna deplete them, but it's gonna take them down. We got in a bind three years ago and we had to have our employees go on four days a week. I just, we promised we'd put that rainy day fund back. And in my opinion, I think the best route would be to entertain funding money to do that without taking out of our general fund.
Okay. Well, our balance right now in the general fund is three-hundred-and-nine-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-six. And when our employees went on the thirty-two hours, we didn't have anything in the general fund.
Because we kept draining it each month, so, I mean...
Well, it was, it was, yeah, that, it did get drained, but we didn't have the revenue coming in that we have coming in now.
And you were worried about the revenue going down from the liquor sales and stuff because of the new stores that were added in our adjoining counties, so that's just what...
It's about four-hundred thousand dollars that we got in the general budget right now. And I think that we're gonna come out probably three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to the good in the general budget over what we budgeted. So, I don't see, I don't see a problem with paying out that road for sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six. And I understand that you do want to do a big paving project and you wanna borrow... I think we borrowed three-hundred thousand dollars last time, is that correct, David? About three-hundred thousand? Five-hundred thousand, so what were we talking about that you'd like to borrow this time?
I mean, we'd have to do an evaluation of what roads need it and...
He's got a list. There's what, ten major, but there's three of the major, major roads, top three.
And that's, that's how when you do a larger project, you get a better quote and better deal on it.
Roads are good, they've been done right there, is the Stefan Road and 25. And Loop, I mean, they have to be done.
Right.
I'm sure if a lot more of things were done on the map, those, those are have to be done.
Yeah.
I definitely foreplay the roads, it's just where we wanna take them.
Right, we're gonna take them in front of the general fund.
We are, okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Ms... Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes, motion made and carried. Then there is a, to approve the bid for Jerry Faust to cut the hay at the 141. Jerry Faust has been cutting the hay at the 141 for three, four years. He has insurance that's required for the cutting of the hay. And he does a good job with it. If no one has any objections to entertaining a motion to be made that Jerry can cut the hay at the 141.
I salute.
Second the motion, any discussion on that? I don't bear to review it, but, go ahead, call roll.
Glenn Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Alan Smith?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Stanley?
Yes. Right, can I get that motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.